Good afternoon and welcome to the public hearing of the Public Accounts Committee. Today, Wednesday, 12th of March. And this is a public hearing with the Chief Officers for Economy and the Chief Officer for Infrastructure and Environment to discuss and to explore joint tender process for ferry services and the outcomes when they take this hearing as a part of our ongoing review on procurement. I'm welcoming also members of the public, just to remind that members of the public cannot comment during the public hearing and when the public hearing will finish, leave the room safe. I also would like to remind the mobile phones should be put on silent, including Mayan. The hearing will take one hour and we will start with the introductions. Deputy Ina Gardner, Chair of the Public Accounts Committee.
Deputy Alukakovich, Member of the Committee.
Deputy David Wall, Member of the Committee.
Vijay Kukriya, I'm a lay member of the PAC.
I'm Lim Hamant, I'm the Controller in order to general in attendance to the PAC.
Glenn Keel, Lay Member.
Philip Taylor, Lay Member.
And I'll start, thank you, and I'll start with the general.
Themself to go.
Yeah, apology, yes, please.
Richard Corrigan, Chief Officer, Department for the Economy.
And Andy Skate, Chief Officer for Department of Infrastructure and Environment.
Yeah, and as we scheduled the hearing only for an hour, there are numbers of questions that we are going through, so please keep your answers sincere. Before we'll start with full question, can you please explain for the public to us the role in the tender process, what was the difference?
Yeah, so my role was the Senior Responsible Officer for the Joint Channel Islands Tender Process because ferry connectivity sits within the overall responsibilities of Department for the Economy.
And I was the Senior Responsible Officer from the 24th of October 2024 until the, it was just after the 6th of January 2025, for the latter part of Phase One, but certainly for Phase Two of the procurement for a Jersey-only service.
And the rationale has probably been quite well covered in the media is that I'd recused myself from the process as I think from memory of the 21st of October and Andy was appointed a few days later.
Thank you. If we start with the first part of our questions, it's around the background preparation for the tender and the processes. Would you please share with the Public Accounts Committee, how did you prepare for the joint tender process?
Yeah, so the origins go right back until February 2021 and an approach from the incumbent operator Condor seeking financial support from the Government of Jersey and the States of Guernsey for losses that they were incurring during Covid, so lost revenues, because during the Covid period they weren't seeing the passenger traffic, albeit freight volumes remain constant. So at the time, the first approach looking for financial support, there was an analysis of Condor's P and L, Condor's balance sheet, and that work was primarily conducted at the time by Ports of Jersey. My involvement came a little bit later as we started to then look at options for future sea connectivity, recognizing in government's eyes at least, some of the problems that the Condor appeared to have financially. We did a number of elements of due diligence with KPMG and their specialist transport team from the UK, with a company called MDST, who specialize in different forms of transport, so the modal freight consultants, and also another company called Blair Reed, who are shipbrokers, and ultimately they were the brokers, I think, on the sale of the MV Straitsman to Condor, which is now Condor Islander. There was a comprehensive analysis undertaken in January 22 of the various options that would be open to the governments of the islands in terms of delivering future services. And there was a very clear letter set out by the then Chief Exec, sorry, the then Chief Ministers of the States of Jersey and the Government of Guernsey to Condor on the basis in which the governments may consider Condor directly negotiating a new contract with the islands. And that set out very clear political priorities from both island's standpoints.
So just a minute, just to clarify, in January 22, you didn't consider a tender, you considered to extension of the services or would tender being considered?
So the political consideration at the time from the two islands was to look at Condor's current financial issues and to consider whether the best method going forward was a direct negotiation of a new contract with Condor. Condor tendered two offers, one in late 2021, one in autumn 2022, both of which fell a long way short of those political priorities that had been established. Officers then went into a phase of analyzing other options, so if we weren't going to be able to appoint an owner-operator to deliver these services going forwards, what other models were there? So would you have a public sector provider? Should the public own the assets and appoint an operator of those assets? So we went through five or six different operating models before deciding that we would go to market testing to identify interest in an owner-operator relationship. And that market testing commenced in January of 2024.
What happened between October 2022 and January 2024?
So there was options analysis that's worked out, there was resilience planning with emergency planning colleagues across the States of Jersey, the Government of Guernsey. May 23, there was the modeling of a five-vessel fleet to serve both the islands, there were ongoing discussions between Jersey and Guernsey political leads as to the best option going forwards. In June 23, there was a valuation of the Condor business conducted for us by KPMG, joint workshops with Guernsey in August 23. October 23, correspondents to Deputy Morell from Deputy Inda indicating a wish to continue trying to get a third direct negotiation of a deal out of Condor. But by that point, we were then on notice shortly thereafter of Condor's very acute financial problems when they approached the governments looking for a significant injection of equity totaling £40 million between the two Channel Islands. That then was a case of scrambling to sort out contingency vessels for the two islands, which we did with DFDS as the lead contingency provider. As I said, in January 24, we went into market testing and that was the commencement of the new Channel Islands tender process.
So the tender process documents, procurement strategy drafting started in January 24?
The procurement strategy was developed in quarter four of 2023, so we actually started market testing in January of 2024. So that market testing was indicating that we were interested in a new owner-operator, we wanted to see if the market had sufficient depth to it. Clearly, if it didn't have depth, we would be going back to try and negotiate with the incumbent, but we had seven expressions of interest at that time for market testing. So that gave us the confidence to proceed into a full tender process in 2024.
So basically, but in 2023, you had clarity that the current financial position of Condor is not reliable and they cannot continue to operate? If I've got it right from your, from your...
It's fair to say there was a great deal of smoke and mirrors in Condor not being honest and transparent about the state of their financial position. So we suspected there were deep-rooted problems there with the capital structure of the company. We know that in normal times, the routes are cash generative, they should generate an EBITDA of 20 to 25 million pounds a year, but the acute capital structure that Condor faced from having been through the hands of private equity infrastructure ownership on several different turns left a company that was very heavily indebted and would struggle with any sort of financial sensitivity analysis. So we modeled all of that for KPMG through 2023. We looked at alternative models for delivering services, we identified what other vessels there are in the marketplace, given that the very nature of the harbors in Jersey and Guernsey are quite Goldilocks, I suppose is the best description, in terms of the size and the draft of the vessels and also the speed the vessels need to keep up over the course of a week to maintain the resilience of freight services. But we did a lot of work with the external advisors and also emergency planning work because we were concerned even in early 2023 of a possible collapse of Condor. It wasn't until we got to the back end of 23 that Condor then presented very acutely and honestly with the depth of the financial problems that they were confronting.
I understand.
Okay, thank you. So we get to the end of 23 and it's clear that Condor is on the ropes financially. You've explained clearly the reasons why. And so you made a decision for a joint procurement tender process with Guernsey, is that correct?
Yeah, we've been in dialogue with the States of Guernsey throughout this period. So the first stage analysis in the back of Covid was primarily led by Ports of Jersey. But as we went through later 2022 and 23, we were open book with Guernsey about the depth of our concerns, sharing our professional analysis. It's fair to say that Guernsey were quite cynical at a political level around the state of Condor's issues. There are those correspondence trail between the ministers over that period where Guernsey just wanted to negotiate a new deal directly with Condor, even as late as October 2023.
Sorry, can I just interrupt you? What do you mean by the word cynical?
The, Guernsey believed that Jersey was trying to bring in a new operator almost at all costs and their stated preference was just to hammer at a new deal with the incumbent.
Done, right.
As I say, the correspondence trail demonstrates that Guernsey were repeatedly challenging, questioning, professional due diligence had been prepared by KPMG. That's their right to do so, but in terms of the evidence, it was only pointing us in one direction. Jersey's position was proven to be robust with Condor's approach to us at the end of 2023, looking for significant public sector support.
Yes, it's a legitimate supplementary.
If you, if there were doubts about Guernsey's position, you must have doubts about them as a joint procurement partner. So I could ask, why did you go with them if you had doubts about them as a reliable partner?
I think, I think there's still a desire to try and work wherever we can as a Channel Islands buying, power-buying entity. And also the routes are optimized if you have both islands in the look for both the freight and the passenger services. So the five-vessel option covering two islands is generally a more efficient option than splitting operators as we've ended up being forced to do.
So you knew there was a risk in going with Guernsey?
We, we knew there was a risk and therefore when we developed the tender documentation, we ensured that there were sufficient exits within that in the event that Jersey and Guernsey couldn't reach the same conclusion.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got a complicated procurement process because you've got a joint procurement process. Who was advising officers on the procurement strategy in a pretty unusual set of circumstances, which I'm sure that Jersey won't have faced in the past?
Yeah, so we had in-house support from our own Commercial Services function, but we leaned very heavily on the acquired knowledge that KPMG had built up over time in the last several years working on this particular project and on the options analysis. So in terms of some professional services support and in making sure that a tender for this type of services, when it landed with ferry operators, it was speaking in the right language to them as opposed to being a public procurement for widgets or some other service that may be more commonplace from, from the government. This was a contract ultimately that has a revenue value of around £2 billion over its duration. So it was a, you know, quite a high tariff procurement. So we used KPMG and we also used DWF professionally on the legal side, again, to ensure that from a procurement standpoint, whilst we don't have the PCR obligations here that you'd have in the UK, that we did run a compliant procurement process throughout.
I guess my questions are not as closely related to the ferry side of the thing, but the joint procurement side of things. So there were clear risks when you have different parties trying to procure something together, who have different interests. In this case, you have an extra set of risks, which are political risks above commercial risks. So what input was there that KPMG was able to supply in relation to a joint procurement strategy? Can you name any of the particular case studies for things, joint procurements that have gone badly wrong in the past, in the recent past, that could have informed this strategy, please?
I think there'd be very few genuine joint Channel Island procurements, but there was a stated wish politically to try and work together to achieve the best deal for the Channel Islands.
Okay, but there have been European joint procurements, multiple between individual lender or individual countries. This is not, you know, this is a reasonably well-drawn graph. So did KPMG bring any specific expertise in a joint procurement process?
No, the key for KPMG was facilitating the workshops in terms of a specification of needs that both islands had for the future services, making sure that those could be tendered in a consistent manner so that we were tendering with one document and one consolidated set of needs for both islands, as opposed to both islands having specific needs of their own and trying to adopt them into a single process.
Okay, I completely understand in terms of the specification. I'm, I'm looking one level up at the process. So just, you know, a simple example would be creating an SPV to run the procurement process, so that you've got a commonality of interest, at least at that level. Was that something that was considered and rejected?
Those, those options, so as I said, there was earlier options analysis on different ways that ferry services could be delivered in the future.
Procured, I'm talking about procurement, Amy, not delivery.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a joint Channel Islands procurement vehicle, so that wasn't considered at the time. And indeed, our own Commercial Services function was going through some quite significant change. So there was no consideration for a joint Channel Islands procurement vehicle. However, we used the documents and the framework to ensure that we were procuring a joint set of needs to the marketplace. And that was demonstrated in market testing with seven expressions of interest, that there was interest in coming to meet a joint Channel Island set of needs.
Yeah, no, I, I totally, I totally get that. I know that you, you explained very clearly and very thoroughly that there were plenty of other companies out there who were interested in tendering for the work. My question is about the process of how did you organize, what consideration was given to? We've got differing interests between these, we've got a common set of interests, but what happens if one, one of the risks crystallizes? Whether that's a financial risk within Condor or a political risk such as happened with Guernsey not finalizing their budget, for example, what, you know, how were these accounted for? I didn't see any reference in the procurement strategy.
So they were accounted for in the ITT documentation, that if the islands weren't forced to achieve a consensus decision, if the view of the island evaluators reached a different conclusion on a particular point, they reserve, we reserve the right to go our separate ways. So there was an exit, there was an off-ramp, so to speak, for each island should their needs not have been met.
Okay.
I don't see how a joint SPV would have been any different in resolving that kind of same off-ramp issue.
For the simple reason that it would already have established what the acceptable criteria would have been for...
Well, we'd established the acceptable criteria in the tender documents.
Okay, but for example, so we had, Guernsey failed to finalize their budget at the point at which they claimed, at the point at which they'd committed to finalize their budget. Was the idea that the entire procurement would be collapsed as a result of that? What about other types of risk?
No, the intention at all times was that the procurement costs would be jointly shared between the two islands and indeed they were jointly shared between the two islands, that was honoured.
Okay, and what about the other consequence? We're going to come on later to the other consequential risks, but what I'm trying to get at is what external input was there into running a joint procurement strategy at the level of the joint procurement strategies, all the other things downstream, I totally understand, but what consideration was given to how do we? We've got a complicated procurement strategy that we don't typically do within our department, we're not used to, we don't have the expertise, KPMG aren't supplying the expertise, you've explained that they're not mandated to, they were not mandated to consider the joint procurement aspects. At what point did the joint, the actual mechanics of how a joint procurement works and the risks of that, at what point were they considered? What support were officers given in making those decisions?
So Jersey had prepared in the background the criteria for a procurement of Jersey-only services because we'd recognized there was a cynicism from Guernsey's side towards doing a full request for proposal. As I say, that was set out in political correspondence of October 2023. Ultimately, we indicated to Guernsey that we were prepared to go ahead and market test all Jersey-only services if Guernsey were not prepared to partner with us. We then shared, when Guernsey came back and said, okay, well, we are going to commit with you. They'd initially put some very unrealistic criteria down, for example, insisting that the incumbent made it to the final stage of analysis. Well, that's no basis for an objective procurement process. So, but only when Guernsey hitched their trailer up and said, okay, we are now committed to a proper, objective procurement process, did we then share our procurement strategy with them and then go through the process of developing the documentation together for market testing and then ultimately for a tender process. So Jersey had been doing this in the background and I think it's been noted by the States of Guernsey in their own scrutiny hearing that Jersey were much further down the tracks in terms of a process to move towards procurement than Guernsey were. So they were coming in at a later stage of consideration to make it a joint process.
Okay, we need to move on, but I'll, I'll just simply state this in that case. My question is, this was a joint procurement strategy?
Eventually.
This was intended to be a joint procurement strategy from the outset?
No, from the very outset, the political indications from both Jersey and Guernsey was to try and negotiate a new deal directly with Condor. Because Jersey believed that Condor was not a viable counterparty long term, Jersey had started the process of preparing for an open market procurement. It took some time before Guernsey realized that that indeed was the right direction to travel down as late as October 2023. Very shortly thereafter, we had all of the financial resilience issues at Condor, there was not the opportunity to re, basically to go into reverse and look at other vehicles for doing a joint procurement. So we pushed on in terms of an SPV or any other vehicle you speak of. So that's why we went down the route of using the documentation to enter into a joint process together with a single set of criteria being specified for both islands.
Would it be fair to say that you were, in a sense, flushing Guernsey out in that case? Was there, that the joint procurement process was set up to fail?
I don't think so, no. I think what we were committed to do is to try and find a route for Channel Island connectivity. We still believe the best option for the Channel Islands is for both islands to be served by one operator. Unfortunately, that didn't prove to be possible because of the actions that Guernsey took much later in tender process one.
Okay.
Okay, I think we need to move on. Thank you.
So you had a number of options, is what you're saying?
Yes.
One of which was a joint strategy with Guernsey. Otherwise, Jersey could have gone separately, Guernsey could have gone separately, you could have tried and negotiated two separate contacts with Condor, but at some stage, you went with a joint strategy?
Yes.
Now, I'm a simple person, I'm afraid.
As I've...
If I've never done something before, I ask somebody who's done it before and knows the pitfalls, yeah, okay, someone who's done a, put in place a joint strategy, say, okay, how do we do it? They do it all over the world, commercial organizations, the European Union even does it. So I think Vijay's point is this, who did we speak to who'd done it before? Whose advice we could use, is that right?
Very good.
Now, if you didn't do it, that's fine, I understand that, and that's the answer. But that, I think, is where we were trying to get to. So at some point, you said, okay, we're going to go down the joint process. And presumably, having gone through, saying, okay, we're going to try joint process, it may or may not work. Where was Plan B?
Well, Plan B, if a joint process didn't work, was having those off-ramps in the procurement process that allowed for the islands to go and basically go their separate ways.
Do it separately.
Which indeed is what happened at the end.
Okay. Now, another question, I think we probably covered, we've exhausted that question, probably. And so thank you for being so effusive on the subject. One thing I have a slight problem with is that the sea transport policy was updated in June 2024, which is after the joint process had already started. So already you're a situation where we've changed our policy, but there's an, but we've got a tender out there, if you like. So how do I reconcile those two points?
So what we were clear with in the market testing phase is that we were looking, if the right investment case came forwards from operators in the tender process, that we would grant exclusivity as opposed to just granting a very high bar to competitive entry into the marketplace. You're probably aware in the current operating agreement expiring later this month with Condor, there's a high bar to entry. If someone comes in and offers the same minimum service requirements, they can enter onto the routes. They cannot come in and just cherry pick, for example, the, the peak traffic in the summer. To secure the right level of investment, we wish to have the option available to us of granting exclusivity so that the operator had the confidence to be able to go and raise the capital that was required to invest in retunaging, which was badly needed on the, on the services. So the development, that change in the sea transport policy, which was a fairly, as I say, modest change in the overall scheme of things, was in track and that was published in, in, in June 2024, as you say.
So that was just reinforcing if was a Plan B in place?
Well, we were clear...
To be clear about who could come in, who could bid?
We, we were clear with bidders that we were looking, if necessary, and if it helped to unlock the right investment, that we would grant exclusivity under the contracts for the Channel Islands, not just for Jersey, but Jersey had to have an enabling policy for that, which the sea transport policy didn't have. Guernsey separately were developing their, I think, ROR regulations or some legislative stands because they didn't have any capacity to grant licenses or ramp permits hitherto, which is why in the outgoing arrangements, Guernsey was in a much looser form of contract with Condor as an MOU versus Jersey's operating agreement, which was more robust, but certainly a long way short of the new agreement that we've just entered into with DFDS.
Probably time we moved on a bit, because we've taken up a good amount of your...
Very quickly picked up before we move to difference because who was in charge of this process?
Well, ultimately politicians are in charge, so...
Let's not, let's not go to the politicians because when the process started, there needs to be lots of officers' work. And if officers are not happy with politician decision, they need to ask minister to sign a lot of instructions that was not requested. So leave politicians alone. Who was in charge of putting this process and leading this process to present to the minister what minister need to decide?
I, I, I won't go back from my previous answer. I was the Senior Responsible Officer, as I said.
Between two islands?
There was a Senior Responsible Officer in each island and then...
It was nobody connecting, so basically each, there are two offices and they have like 50/50, so it's nobody who is...
It's, it's a joint process.
But who is overseeing the process? If, or anyone independent overseeing the process?
It's, it's a joint process that was then, but we had external professional advisors, but it was a joint process, it was 50/50, it wasn't two-thirds, one-third in Jersey's favour because of the size of the population or the size of the freight market.
If, what was the process in place, procedure in place if the bidder has a problem or has a question? And would they go separate for two jurisdictions and receive two different answers? Would it come together? Would you have meetings together to ask jointly the same questions?
It depends what the process, the question was, if it was a question...
No, 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 what was the process put in the procedure when you planned before we got into the...
So it's very clear in the tender documents that they would submit a clarification question request on the procurement portal, that was the States of Jersey procurement portal, that would then be shared with the procurement leads in both islands, so a member of the Jersey procurement team in Commercial Services, a member of the Guernsey procurement team, and then that would go out through the SROs and if it was relating to the evaluation, to the individual evaluators for comment. And the question would then be posted back through the States of Jersey portal and in the interests of all bidders, provided it wasn't a commercially sensitive point that was unique to one bidder, it would be published to the benefit of all bidders.
Yeah, just a small question. You talked about the cynical approach of some of the political characters. What do you feel was your relationship like with your counterpart in Guernsey? Did you have a good working relationship? Did you feel there was total trust there?
I would say we did. I wouldn't say that's the process at the end, given where the process ended up and how it ended up there. But I think at every step of the way up to that point, there were weekly SRO conversations, I think it was a healthy dialogue. We'd helped Guernsey significantly on the contingency side as well, despite the fact they'd acquired what was supposed to be a contingency vessel in the Islander, they recognized that that wasn't a contingency at all and entered into the new contingency arrangements that we had gone about sourcing for, for Jersey first and foremost.
So you felt there was good trust between the two islands and the officers?
Yes, yeah.
Well, any legislative shortfalls identified ahead of the tender process for each island?
For, for Guernsey, they were working through their ROR, I can't remember the name of the legislation off the top of my head, but there was something that was passing through Guernsey's assembly.
When it was adopted.
I think it was adopted in September of last year.
So basically, when the tender needed to come to the conclusion, the legislation was still not in place and it was no concern surrounded?
I was concerned. We didn't need any legislative basis here. Guernsey needed to have a legislative basis to grant ramp permits. That was a Guernsey challenge, but equally it was a risk in the process itself if that wasn't legislated for in time.
And how this risk was mitigated in the preparation?
We were just given assurances, both politically and through officers, that that was working its way through their normal political process in terms of lodging and debate and ultimate approval.
When the draft concession template issued and was it in line with what was originally planned? Because it was originally planned on the 31st of May.
The draft concession agreement was broadly in line with what was planned, but it was put out to the bidders then for them to give derogations to that draft concession agreement in terms of what was in the draft contract that they may have issues with, that they wished to then be part of a follow-on negotiation.
So I would like to say that the day the bidders received draft concession agreement on the 31st of May... So I would like to say that the day the bidders received draft concession agreement on the thirty first of May as was planned in the process in the.
There was a little bit. It was a little bit later than that. I think it was another two or three weeks from memory later than that.
Two, three weeks.
When they got the concession agreement.
They got extension because they needed to respond by first of July.
That was accommodated for later in the process and we had, after we after the tenders had closed, there was then a significant period of clarification questions, which we morphed into what we called an invitation to negotiate stage between the islands and the two bidders that had passed at initial evaluation. And then we went into more detailed discussion around the concession agreement and the derogations that they were proposing.
What were the reasons for the delay to produce draft concession agreement on thirty first of May as intended?
A mixture of you had Jersey officers, Guernsey officers, and then you had external councils. So it was the process of ensuring that everything that we wanted to have covered went into that first draft for discussion and then into a draft that we were happy to share with the bidders. But the bidders were kept informed through the process. They were satisfied with the process. And in any event, we had the rights within the tender process to move the timetable. And we did that by consent with each of the bidders as we went through the process.
What went wrong? And why?
So what went wrong ultimately was, well, two things. First of all, from a Jersey standpoint, tender process one was successful. And the reason I state that is we set out criteria.
But you realise that we cannot say from Jersey was successful, from Guernsey unsuccessful. When you have joint tender, if joint tender failed, it failed. You cannot put it as a successful from our side and not from their side. It's kind of. I I think it's a bit, maybe it's a difference of opinion, but.
No, but.
What went wrong with this joint tender? Looking back, what lessons you've learned, what you would do differently?
Okay, if I can explain. So the 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 tender process was scoring in each island. So Jersey would score against criteria from our evaluators. Guernsey would score against their criteria. Jersey identified in the Brittany ferries bid, there were two areas that Jersey assessed Brittany ferries to have failed. When I say Brittany ferries, what it actually translated to later in the process is we identified all along that it was Condor that was bidding, not Brittany ferries. That's quite a fundamental point. Had Condor bid at the outset, they almost certainly wouldn't have met the early stage financial standing test and they would have been disqualified from the process. So nevertheless, we identified two fail ratings on what was titled as a Brittany ferries bid.
It's not about this. What I'm asking, what's gone wrong with the joint project, not about specifics?
Getting to that point. So the DFDS bid failed on one aspect. Jersey had to disqualify both bidders in tender process one because in our assessment, neither bidder had met the required criteria. Guernsey had a different view in that they had assessed that DFDS had failed on one element of the criteria, but their scoring of the Brittany ferries bid had moved up quite considerably from initial evaluation to final evaluation, inexplicably in our view, and not something that we could support. Guernsey then came, they wrote to Deputy Morell twenty four hours after the scoring closed, saying, we've made a decision, Brittany ferries have have passed all the criteria. As far as we are concerned, we're going ahead to a point. From a Jersey standpoint, we couldn't concur with that outcome because from a Jersey standpoint, both bidders had actually failed in the process.
I understand. My question, it's not about less about the specific. I would like to go back when preparation of the joint tender. And when you're preparing joint tender, what mechanisms were put in place that it will be joint decision making? Or alternatively, you call the joint tender, but actually decision making was not joint, everyone make their own decision. So it's like almost have two different tenders.
Well, exactly, because Jersey's evaluators had decided that both bidders had failed. Guernsey's decided that one had passed and Guernsey's politicians concurred with that view. Ultimately, Jersey is not going to be bound to recruiting a twenty into a turn twenty year contract for a ferry operator against criteria that we've assessed to have failed and that Guernsey have assessed to have passed. So the decision was that from Guernsey's standpoint, they wished to make a an appointment out of tender process one. And there were rights to make a partial award of contract, which they chose to exercise.
I understand. So at outset of this joint tender, there was no mechanism involved in joint decision making, that each island make their own decision.
No, there was. There was an evaluator's toolkit where both islands would make a decision. Ideally, those situations.
But it was not that you sat together in one room and gone together through the evaluation. It was each party doing their decisions and hopefully they will come together.
Let me try and track.
Yeah.
Based on what you know now, what would you do differently next time? To prevent such a situation occurring again?
Quite honestly, I I wouldn't enter a joint tender process. Because I think the the writing was in the wall from an early stage in terms of the the politics of the situation in Guernsey, about wishing to do another deal with Condor. I think what we've seen post event in some of the actions is again, it reinforces a perception that Guernsey were always out to do a deal with the incumbent operator rather than to consider something new.
So if that was the case, why did you follow through? If your gut feeling has the lead on this, why would you continue to do that and then advise the minister of let's go with that?
Well, that's first of all, that's with hindsight. Secondly, there is a there's a strong political appetite to try and work together as the Channel Islands. That's a lofty ambition. It's one that's much more difficult to realise, I'm afraid.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Was your advice that maybe this is risky? The vice to the minister, was this risky going through this?
Yes.
Because you believe Guernsey's reliable partner.
But the minister, the minister and I both believed it was a it was a worthwhile endeavour to try to do a Channel Islands deal because that was in the best interest ultimately of the users of the services because it optimised the capacity with the demand.
Okay, yeah.
So are you saying you you'd prefer not to go through a joint procurement process in the future? Are you saying that there are no available economies of scale from having a joint inter-island ferry service? And or that they would be outweighed by the political risk? I'm not clear.
Well, I've no, I think it's quite clear. I think I've already said I prefer the services to be joint Channel Island services because I believe that optimises the vessels, the demand and the capacity in in the right way. I was asked about lessons learned. I think the lessons learned are first of all quite raw. We're only talking a few months on from the process. Jersey has been subject to litigation that we have fought off successfully. That leaves quite a mark in terms of a desire to work on such a major joint procurement with Guernsey at any near point in the future. Now, that's not my decision ultimately.
Yeah, I I I what's worrying me here is is you 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 start out in a position whereby you both, both colleagues seem to have a good deal of trust. And the trust has clearly evaporated extraordinarily rapidly. I'm just going to quote here Deputy Morell's commentary here. He said in the marking, there was shown to be in the failed status, Guernsey had very, very different scoring on that. Well, you know, so the question really is, were there any material differences between Jersey and Guernsey's scoring system? And and when did that become very apparent that that those those two were very, very? They had very different outlooks. Was it early early on? Was it later on? What point did you realise actually being taken for one here?
Yeah, so it was only at the the stage of the final evaluation. So the way that there was an evaluator toolkit that was shared between the two islands. So it prescribed the basis on which evaluations would take place. So you would have each strand of the tender, financial, commercial, technical and legal. You'd have an evaluator for each of those in Jersey and evaluator for each in Guernsey. They would independently score their sections. They would then have a facilitated discussion with the procurement leads from both islands, KPMG. And they would talk about their respective assessment of that strand of the bid. They weren't forced to reach a consensus score. And indeed, if someone was scoring a four and somebody an eight, that's quite a big difference out of an overall mark of ten. So forcing a consensus score of six isn't necessarily the appropriate thing to do. In mandatory areas, one may pass, one may fail. Again, not necessarily appropriate to try and force a consensus in that scenario. So that's why we got to a point in the final adding up of the scores where Jersey's scoring was pretty consistent in the two bids from the initial to the final evaluation. Guernsey significantly upscored the Brittany ferries bid over the course. And I think the DFDS bid marginally moved down in the way.
So so when the minister says, we discovered that the scoring systems were quite different. You're saying that's not the not not the case. You they you're saying actually the scoring systems were the same. It's just they came up with different results. So it's not quite quite as accurate statement being made by the minister in that case.
Well, so the minister may well have been thinking on his feet. I don't know what the setting was, but there was a toolkit. There were clear criteria within the tender document around what constituted different levels of scoring. And then you had the view of the evaluator. And they may come at it from different standpoints. I would one hundred percent back the the quality, the insight of the evaluation team that that Jersey had on this in each of the strands of the bid. But just to give you an indication, Deputy, the the Guernsey bid between the initial evaluation and final, they moved the Condor bid up in seven categories. And by contrast, Jersey increased the Condor bid in two categories. We had the same discussions, the same joint responses to questions and so on, but they took a very different view. On the DFDS bid, Guernsey increased the DFDS bid by one and decreased it in three. Jersey increased it in three and then all the others remained the same. So the significant move was in how Guernsey scored the Brittany ferries bid from initial evaluation to final evaluation.
Are you trying to understand what the difference was?
That that wasn't necessarily my job as the SRO, other than to the point when the fine. If I can finish, other than to the final point when the scores came together, to then look at what that meant for a joint process.
I suppose, going back to VJ's, which you've pointed about having someone who's done this before. Someone who's done it before was advising the joint team, who said, okay, I need to understand what the differences are and explain them to the two tenders. Because they may have a different viewpoint. The other point hasn't picked up.
No, so those were talked through, as I say, that if you take the financial aspects of it, you had a Jersey evaluator, a Guernsey evaluator. They scored independently. Then they had a moderated discussion and in that moderated discussion, KPMG were part of that. But it wasn't to force a blended score from the two.
I wasn't.
If they could reach a consensus by just saying, well, I thought this and by explanation, it brought somebody up or down, that was fine. But it didn't force the issue that they had to reach a consensus.
Trying to get to a moderating position. I was trying to get to an understanding from our point of view as to why Guernsey's changed.
Oh.
That's what I was trying to understand because it may be reasons.
Again, this is a question.
Valid or invalid.
Yeah.
The same with me for the same view about yours. It's not about getting to a blended solution. It's about understanding.
I think it's fair to say, and this is where my involvement started. There was no joint SRO this interactions to have that discussions. As to, we clearly have differences here. How are we going to try and resolve these differences to try and get to a common procurement outcome?
Or just understand them.
And so what I can say is, Richard, prior to myself taking the reins, attempted that in terms of we clearly have differences here. What are we going to do about it? Certainly, I I had the same conversation with the Guernsey SRO. My first interaction was firstly, hello, welcome. Secondly, we clearly have differences in our procurement here. How are we going to go about trying to resolve the position and bring our parties together? And at that point, it was very clear that Guernsey were taking a, we will mathematically average this out. The scoring is closed. We are not having a conversation. We took the view that we still think there are some significant differences here, which we are unhappy with as a jurisdiction. We want to talk about these before we go ahead. And that that never took place. So.
That's a question for both of you. How then would you improve communication between the two islands in any future joint process?
So so there were weekly SRO conversations. In reality, we spoke a lot more often than weekly throughout the the process. But when we got to that point of the scoring closing, the scores being added up across each of the categories for each bidder between the islands, we had quite a difference in scoring of the two bids. As I say, from Jersey's perspective, both bids had registered fails, so we were having to disqualify both bidders. We did have one stronger bid. The DFDS bid was stronger. If Jersey wished to take a level of risk, we could have gone on to try and ignore that fail and negotiate in the legal phase. That wasn't unbalanced, felt to be the safest option in terms of being open to judicial review. In any event, we had judicial review anyway. So but Guernsey, as Andy has said, were not prepared to enter into a discussion around what the scoring differential meant for what was supposed to be a joint process. And were completely intransigent about it, both politically and at officer level.
Okay.
And I think.
And if anything, we I was certainly informed that this isn't a matter for officers to resolve. This can only be resolved politically. And that was the very strong message I got from the Guernsey SRO.
And yeah.
In writing.
And even as the Court of Appeal in Jersey recognised after the judicial review, Jersey, to the the court's words, Jersey was placed in an invidious position.
Okay, next section.
Yeah. Glenn?
I think you've just covered a lot of those that I was going to.
Okay, before I move into the next session, section, I want to ask. It was no joint SRO. Is it something that you would consider that would help to make sure that the process are more working jointly when if you would have joint SRO and not two SRO work in their own ways?
I think the, listen, I think.
In hindsight, not now.
I think I think the principle is perfectly commendable. I think how you appoint that joint SRO, where they come from, that's another level of challenge altogether, as I say.
And you probably didn't have time because the joint process tender started in January and we needed to make decisions.
Well, as I say, there was a a view from Guernsey that was expressed that they felt they were sort of being led at times by Jersey. And as I say, Deputy Indus correspondent from October twenty three was, you know, if we're doing a joint process, we want to be here, we want to be there. It's a fifty 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 fifty. Otherwise, we're not, we're not playing. It was felt unbalanced and in the interest of Channel Islands working, which were often criticised for not endeavouring to do on procurement, that it was worth trying to secure a joint Channel Islands procurement process.
Yeah, so getting into a slightly more technical question, just more detailed question. Could you tell us, please, about the fuel price adjuster clause? I noticed in the request for clarification after the original tender documents went out, that was one of the first questions that came back as one might have expected. It wasn't included in the original ITT, as far as I can see. Can you tell me about Jersey's position in relation to the fuel price adjuster clause and how it developed over time up until the final award, please?
Was that in tender process one or two?
Let's go through both.
Well, it would have been raised to clarify create clarification question in one or the other.
I can't remember which one it was. I think it must have been the second one.
No, can I?
I'm pretty sure it was the second.
That would be our lead, the second one then.
So certainly in terms of the 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 second process, we were, we wanted clarification from both both companies as to what any fuel surcharges would be. I think it's fair to say that one company had a lot better information because they were the incumbent operator than the new entrant. And so certainly my appreciation that the first set of information we had was from from the new the new entrant company. It's probably not based on full full data because they didn't have full data in terms of how the the routes would work and the market would work. Certainly, that was clarified by the company, that both bidding companies clarified their position on fuel surcharges throughout. As they got more information, they gave us a a more accurate figure, certainly the the new the new entrant did.
Was my reading, my reading was that they asked that the the fuel price adjuster mechanism was not included in either of the ITTs. And the spreadsheets you've shared with us, listing the clarification questions, which I think were responded to by July of twenty twenty four. So maybe that is the first tender process.
Yeah, yeah.
Requested further information on whether there would be a few fuel price adjuster mechanism to which our response was no, there would not be one. I was just wondering where that reply came from and what was driving that policy?
I I would need to go back and look in the context of tender process one as to how we answered it and who answered it. But it's commonplace in the industry for there to be a charge for freight and then a what's called a bunker adjustment factor levied on top of that, which reflects the the rise and fall of marine fuel. With DFDS, their bunker adjustment factors by route are published on their website on a monthly basis. With Brittany ferries, I think there's, I believe, in the public domain, Condor's haven't been a matter of publication. So what was essential is to try and understand, there's the freight cost, but is is a cheaper freight cost being recovered in a higher bunker adjustment factor somewhere else? I would have to go back and look at the precise.
Could you find out? Because that wasn't my reading of the documents. I may have got that completely wrong. But my understanding was that we refused to allow them a fuel price adjuster. But we ended up with one in the end, according to a newspaper report in February.
No, it would be commonplace for there to be a bunker adjustment factor. Yeah, yeah.
I have a question, and to yourself, what were the key changes between joint tender to the single island tender that was run?
Yeah. So we went from a service requirement for both islands to 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 one only. So that there was a clear requirement for Jersey to be clear what its minimum service requirement was.
So what's changed in the minimum service requirement?
So effectively, yeah, what did what did Jersey want? Because the bidding companies in round one were bidding as to what both both islands.
I understand. What was the, can you specify what was the change to the minimum requirement? What was minimum requirement? What was minimum requirement in joint tender and what was taken out or added in tender for one island?
I'd have to do the assessment between the two. Certainly, in in the second procurement, we were just, we were just very clear with the companies, this is what we're asking you to bid on. So I'd have to do an exercise of just checking the two.
Picked up when I looked through the joint tender. And it was published, so it's public document, it's page, I think, twenty eight in the public document. It was very clear the requirement for seven weekly during the high season and four weekly. Which is fourteen legs, single legs inter-island. Have this been deducted from the single island and why? No, no, it's twenty because he was responsible for the single island tender.
So, so, yeah, I get what I haven't, what I haven't got an answer to is, is what's the mathematical difference between tender round one and tender round two? We were very clear in tender round two, what we wanted to see as part of an island only service. Clearly, the freight volumes for Jersey only are are less than than both islands combined. So that would have impacted on the minimum service requirement we needed to service Jersey only freight and Jersey only passengers. So that the numbers would have been different. I don't have the top of my head the the actual difference.
So the inter-island was taken out from the tender requirement?
We wouldn't expect the Jersey only service to service Guernsey freight, for instance, as a, as a, as an example, or Jersey passengers. So because the route, the route would operate differently directly to Jersey, that would give the bidding company a different operational, operational requirement effectively.
Any other changes or key changes were done between tender, joint tender and the tender final?
I think we were also clear that we wanted to see a minimum vessel requirement. We wanted to be clear what the number of vessels that were going to service Jersey on Jersey only. So we made that clear to both bidding companies. As part of the second process, we had clarification days with both companies where they were able to ask us questions. They'd had to give us an initial submission in terms of the their initial response. We then had two sessions a day each with each company where they could ask us further clarifications on exactly what we were asking. And effectively, whether we were really sure or whether, you know, it gave them an opportunity to challenge what we were asking. So both companies asked us company specific questions. Out of that conversation, we were very clear that we want to see a minimum vessel requirement, so that both companies were clear what vessels they were needing to put on the routes or the routes, and especially in terms of their investment on those vessels. So that that was the absolute bit of clarity. But again, both both companies had that as as part of this clarification days. They were then able to take that information and give us their final submissions.
It was specific, what's changed, and I think they're taking out completely inter-island, it's something that.
I think we also had a fairly good conversation with both companies on the off-peak requirements, which are weather dependent and winter requirements. So we 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 were able to put a bit more flexibility in what that off-peak service requirement was, as opposed to off-on-peak, because of the vagaries of weather and other and other things, so.
If I might add, the, I mean, for example, inter-island services, it was exactly those elements that we wanted to talk about with the Guernsey SRO at the end of scoring, because that failure to enter into discussion between the islands at that point in time was going to create the grounds for divergence of of approach. And we had to look at what that meant for not just a joint procurement, but also for 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 inter-island sailings as well. There was no desire to enter into that dialogue.
Going into now evaluating, looking back on the, how the process went. What abortive costs, if any, have been incurred by the government of Jersey through the joint tender process? And if you have any specific examples of such costs?
So there were no abortive costs as such in tender process one. The professional advice that was used by and large in tender process one was carried over into tender process two. For example, the draft concession agreement was carried forward into substantively into tender process two. Clearly, because we didn't make an award of contract to one particular bidder, they chose to take legal action and to try and seek leave for judicial review. Costs have been incurred in defending the government's position on that. That position was defended successfully with all matters raised by Brittany Ferries comprehensively thrown out by the Court of Appeal ultimately. And we were in the process of taxation of costs, should we not be able to agree mutually the coverage of our costs.
What evaluation has been undertaken of the joint process and what have been the outcomes of this work? Including what were the warning signs that you could have seen from Omstead maybe to to oversee such result?
Yes, I think we sort of indicated probably earlier where we thought there were warning signs around a a general desire from Guernsey to try and do a new deal with Condor at repeated intervals. Condor had had two efforts in late twenty one and late twenty two to table a credible offer, and in both instances had failed. Even in October twenty three, when we were preparing to go to the market for tender, Guernsey still wanted to try and strike a negotiation with Condor alone rather than go to the market. So those, to me, certainly were all warning signs that we weren't necessarily dealing with somebody that was as committed as we would like. But nonetheless, in the interest of joint Channel Island working, we were trying to go ahead with a joint process as best that we could.
Can I just say, just ask one question? Isn't, wasn't there a degree of inevitability about what was going on here? I mean, Guernsey were in for whatever, was it twenty three million pounds on a Condor boat, which?
Twenty six.
Twenty six million? Isn't there a kind of, that's, that's a challenge to walk away from and go, we're not going to, you know, we'll give up on that boat and we'll do so. It doesn't, that, I mean, that's a serious alarm bell, isn't it? When it comes to the decision making, and isn't that sort of front and center of saying, well, what happens if that that boat has, comes out of, is removed from the, you know?
You you make a very good point, definitely. I I wholeheartedly agree. So at the time, we were doing the work on potential alternative models because we were worried about Condor. And we shared openly with Guernsey the fact that we were doing this work, we were talking to ship brokers. One of the vessels identified, should we need to go down the route of the islands buying a vessel, was the Straitsman. We found out in the media that Guernsey had entered into a deal to buy the Straitsman with Condor. We believe initially there were efforts to buy it through the Guernsey Investment Fund as a sort of an independent buyer, albeit with some state's money, we believe, in there, that floundered for some reason. We suspect because of failure of due diligence, because Condor wasn't a credible financial counterparty. But that's a presumption. But nevertheless, states of Guernsey got in, they used their their own emergency powers to prepare a loan and an equity investment to go in with Condor to acquire that vessel. The fact there'd been no prior discussion with Jersey was a point of significant disappointment, to say the least. That hadn't been talked about as a potential joint endeavor. And the fact there wasn't even a twenty four advance notification that they were coming up with this announcement created quite a, an erosion of trust as well. We believe that vessel is now being acquired by Brittany Ferries from Vessel Co., which was the ownership vehicle between the states of Guernsey and Condor. I don't know if that was a factor in Guernsey's eventual decision making, because it suddenly saw that loan extinguished. That is a question for.
But you haven't asked during the preparation of the process, you own the vessel, how open you are to work with other operator? Was this question asked?
Well, so we know from DFDS that DFDS made an inquiry of the directors of Vessel Co., which was the ownership vehicle for the Condor Islander, about the potential for chartering that in the event that Condor.
Jersey, you as a Jersey representative didn't ask Guernsey representative or on political level. You own the vessel, you definitely have some interest, how you would manage this conflict of interest as an owner or co-owner of Condor. And going to, I mean, how open you would be to give to somebody else to run the service when you're owner of the vehicle?
So so conflicts of interest all had to be declared.
Have you discussed how they will manage it? Did you ask this simple question?
Yes, there was.
And what they said, they're open?
They were they were directors of, so the SRO from Guernsey was a director of Vessel Co. And the treasurer, I believe, of the states of Guernsey was also director of Vessel Co. And then there were other directors of Vessel Co., which we believe were from either Condor or Brittany Ferries.
What point did you tell the minister, or how did the minister find out about this? Because as the alarm bells must have been ringing, somebody must have put this towards a political theater rather than a a back office thought.
What stage are you referencing?
Even with that, with with having that 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 vessel that was partially owned in by Guernsey or or would have been. How how's that directed then to our ministers in in charge of?
Well, the ministers became aware at the moment, I became aware, which was reading it in the media.
Pure, okay.
Yeah, so it's it's fair to say that ministers didn't react particularly well to being surprised in that way. And neither did officers.
So we didn't have our finger on the pulse at the time to actually do our sort of due diligence then on checking out those vessels?
No, we were, we were already checking out the vessel, we knew that it was going through a sales process. We knew that Condor were a bidder from our market intelligence, but bearing in mind NDAs are being signed for the advanced acquisition of a vessel. We knew that Condor had made it into the final two of that process, but we understood it was Condor. We were completely surprised that the states of Guernsey were getting involved to the extent that they were.
In terms of lessons learned, certainly from my perspective, I think it's really important, a positive lesson to be learned, that if in terms of procurement processes, things can happen very speedily if shoulders are put to the wheel in an aligned way. So that was a very positive lesson, I think, that we we certainly were able to show in in phase two. I think the other key lesson is that we we've been dealing with here a potential we were open to removing or looking for a different way of operating the ferry service and potentially moving away from an incumbent operator with with decades of experience. To be able to do that, you have to have a position of bravery to make that decision. And you have to have a a process in place where you are able to make that brave decision. So I would certainly contend that the contingency arrangements that were entered into prior to certainly round two procurement very much gave the government of Jersey a sound basis on which to make a brave decision if they wanted to move to a new operator. So they would not be held over a barrel by the incumbent, because that that is, because these are lifeline services. We had to have that that position of assurance that we could move to a new operator without our lifeline falling.
Speaking frankly.
For you as well, it's still on the findings, how how would you apply the lessons to any future tenders?
Well, speaking frankly, I think the incumbent's behavior for a significant part of the last several years has been nothing short of reprehensible in terms of the way that they, their attitude towards the government and to islanders' interests in ferry services. For me, we have to ensure that, you know, that should be a barrier to being able to enter into a procurement process, quite frankly, if you've played hard and fast in that way. The fact that they were given a fair and objective crack of the whip through a a tender process, I think is testament to a desire to try and secure a better deal all round for the island, wherever that came from, with some confidence attempting to be placed in the fact that Brittany Ferries were coming more to the fore in the financial arrangements and the day-to-day operations of Condor. But but Condor's behavior, and as you see, you'll see in today's media, the output for Freedom of Information request. There's comprehensive correspondence between the minister and Condor, which underscores that reprehensible behavior on the part of key executives there.
Yeah, just to to carry on, and you obviously feel very strongly about about how this has been handled. And I just wonder if there's a lesson maybe politicians can learn, because I, in a press release, you said the delay of this past two weeks has clearly been down to political decision making in Jersey and differential positions between the Channel Islands. What's your thoughts about, what's your advice to politicians, basically, when they get involved in these kind of things?
Well, ultimately, in a procurement process, officers can only decide objectively on the basis of what's been tendered and how that stacks against the criteria. So we can't make a recommendation on other factors outside of that. Politicians can.
Generally, to kind of summarize what David said, how can future agreements between the two islands be structured in a different way to avoid such disagreements?
I think it's very, very difficult to say, I mean, whether there's an overarching MOU or or something else that describes how you're going to act in specific circumstances. I think the evaluators toolkit went a very long way to doing that. I think some of the clauses within the tender documentation, again, very clearly allowed for such and, you know, those off-ramps that I spoke of earlier on. But I think you've got to be committed from the start, and I I never really had the sense that politically Guernsey was ever really committed to openly entering into a process that may result in a change of the operator. And indeed, we've ended up in a position where they've appointed Condor as the operator of their new, not Brittany Ferries. Brittany Ferries is the guarantor of their new arrangement, but they've appointed Condor as the operator.
And to more or less conclude the hearing, can I have from each of you one point of change or improvement that you see could be done through this process to make it successful in the future?
One point's magic wand. Yeah, going going back, certainly, the, if you're, if you're getting into a procurement arrangement with a partner, you need absolute clarity that partner's got the same mind and outcome desires that you've got. So it's it's just what Richard has said. I I think our process in both both round one and round two was followed. I think that I can't see anything wrong with the process. Certainly, round two was a lot more speedily done than round round one. You've got, yeah, I I think it's, if it's only one point, I think you've just got to be really clear who you're doing business with and and their motives.
I I think that's much to my earlier point as well, that, you know, some kind of overarching MOU that describes how you're going to act. But I don't think you can necessarily guarantee that you are binding together indefinitely through thick and thin, you know. You know, you make marriage vows, but people may split up over time. Unless there's some real legal heft and a significant penalty to, you know, either bad behavior or just walking off in a different direction. I think it's very difficult where you get to a point that interests turn out not to be as well aligned as you you may have thought. Our intentions were sincere when we went into a joint process. We've come out of that, I think, with with regrets. It's fair to say from a Jersey standpoint that we don't believe that it's been entered into with the same honor and intent on the other side.
If I'm out of a second answer, I I also think you you do need consistency of decision making and resilience in keeping that decision going. It's very tempting, this was, this is one of the highest profile decisions we've made as a government. There was a lot of external pressure, it's worth an awful lot of money to whatever operator. I do think that we had, we did have consistent political leadership with the minister, keeping going on this. It would have been very tempting not to do that. It would have been very tempting to, for us to throw our hand in very early just to go with Guernsey. Whilst that was discussed, we needed to be clear what we were trying to achieve for the island in the longer term. And I think, so sticking to your guns is something that is really important in, you know, let's not, we we can't avoid that that issue. Have to be really clear what we're trying to avoid, to try and to achieve in the outset. And if you're trying to achieve it, you've got to keep going despite the slings and arrows that that come your way.
Two very good questions, and it's really shot answers, please. Where in this process, after all warnings that you had, you actually needed to stop the process before end of October?
So that that was, I guess, that my 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 first week.
When was it you actually felt it's going wrong direction with all warnings that you had?
So so I I would say that there were some inklings that I got from what we called the Gatwick meetings, which took place in around about mid-September, which was four days of seeing Brittany Ferries in the mornings and DFDS in the afternoons. Some inkling that we weren't quite all on the same page. But that was also the point, it was confirming for me that really the Brittany Ferries bid was actually a Condor bid in disguise. And ultimately, it wasn't until the first of November that Condor's acting CEO confirmed to the chief minister in Jersey that it was indeed a Condor bid.
So you already in September knew that it's going wrong way and we could prevent delay for industry and for the islanders that everything would come, that now we still don't have.
Yeah, I think certainly that the first, the first week of my involvement in this, it was very clear that we had differences. Can we, and there was, there were attempts to try and resolve those differences, both from an officer level, but also politically. Indeed, the minister wrote to his counterpart in Guernsey and said, before you absolutely do this decision, are you really sure about all of these issues? And again, we we were as clear as we could have been in terms of where the differences between the parties were and why we held our strongly held concerns over the financial health, et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah, we, there was quite a lot of stuff in that first week.
The question was when you could stop it before? Because it's it's kind of, everything that you told us today, it felt like this warning sign, this warning sign. And it was much, much earlier through the process than the end of October, beginning of November. And the question is, are you confident that the right fair operator was chosen to Jersey?
One hundred percent.
So we'll finish this on this note, public hearing, thank you very.
Comment was, when you have these situations, it's not actually the process, the tender process. It's if you make the wrong decision and you go with a partner who you were upset about during the tender process, what's going to happen afterwards? Whether things are operating, are they still going to be a deliver?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your time and thank you for your answers. Public hearing is closed.